Is it Wednesday morning and it's gonna get bad by the evening for you?
Yeah, one week.
Oh, not like overnight, like during the day.
No, during the day.
All rise.
You gotta pay off your bet?
I did it to pay your off.
Well, I guess I'm...
No, my contribution lets us clear everyone in the room.
Get wifi, what's up with that?
We'll do the claim first because we have the house sales.
I'm sorry, bud.
We'll do the claim first because there's only one claim.
And Rachel's here all day anyway, so it's not like she has to wait.
I think she is coming, yeah.
Well, I used to be, but now...
I haven't been out there, but that closing, she normally does come.
The Skynyrd public Wi-Fi is...
Well, I'm trying the other one too, and it just won't... We'll pick it up.
I couldn't get on last time either.
Might be down, I'm losing my wireless phone.
I don't know why I don't pick up this shared network anymore, I need to be honest.
You have to have TV, you don't have to have TV, do you?
Oh, my sister had no TV for the football game last night.
Yes, I just told everybody that. The last four minutes, man!
She was, the last half, it went out third quarter.
No way.
She can't watch the end of it on her laptop.
My antenna didn't fail me.
I had it on all TVs.
I had it on my phone, my little radio, like the old days. I used to listen to the World Series in the school, with our little headphones, our little...
It made it special.
It did. She used to hide the radios and teach them.
I always had one or two teachers there.
Gotta let us do it, right? Yep? Right now? There you go. All right, old Johnny is, there you go, my friend, he's here.
Yeah, can we pick it up? I'm restarting.
Yeah, John's here, right, you bitch?
Yeah.
He had to work today.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna get going. Okay, I wanna bring, um, City Planning and Development, um, to order, and the first item up is the clock-powered lighting and...
Of course, the microphone, we didn't prepare, pass half out that way. I don't know if I have enough color. I just wanted to pass it out just to give you guys a visual.
Sure.
So, that is a mock-up of what was done about two months ago on the roof of City Hall. Um, the idea is, right now, we have existing incandescent spotlights that were put up when the clock tower burned, and I believe, uh, 1983, I believe when it was, uh, have been here, 1983. So those lights have been existing 1983, they just use a giant light bulb, they're like old-style fog-filled stage lighting. Um, if you've seen up there, uh, we do not get good light, uh, spread on them, they're a little dull, we, uh, we do get requests to light for several events, we've gotten requests for domestic violence, we've gotten requests for breast cancer, we've gotten requests for holidays, gotten requests for leukemia, things like that, to light, and we try to accommodate everyone, but we do, we, uh, cutting cellophane in six inch by six inch, sliding it in front of the light, if it's windy, they blow off, there's issues, they also, for some reason, whatever color we put up there ends up looking pink, every color looks pink, but it's just the washout. So, uh, as we're upgrading our exterior lighting to LEDs and our interior lighting to LEDs, more energy-efficient, uh, we thought now would be a good time, uh, to follow parking garage, which has already been upgraded to similar LEDs, the State Street Bridge, which Metroplex is upgrading with similar color LEDs, to, you know, really address the clock tower. Um, now, this is just a mock-up, uh, we'd actually be able to do several color combinations different than that, every side, every kind of programmable. Um, and our maintenance costs would go down, our operations, right now, we do set people up on the roof when it is, um, like I stated in here, we cannot change the light on the peak, that light's always just white, there's no way to change that, so the front of the clock tower regardless of what we do is white, because it's just too dangerous to, but, and it's too expensive to keep running the lift, so we, we leave that one white. Um, so this is just, uh, another, another improvement, uh, for the city. Uh, we did, uh, we have ME Engineering, uh, who did our, our design, they are the same that did the parking garage, and the same that has done the bridge, they are a lighting, uh, specialty lighting design company, we have, uh, received at least five, six bids, um, the lowest being out of McVayne, out of Troy, uh, and we do have the money for this setup, total for improvements to City Hall.
Questions? What's your, um, what's your timeframe on this?
That is one of the things we're working on with them, uh, with the fixtures, the fixtures are pretty common, I think we're thinking around two, three months, or probably be ready for the spring, I don't know if we want them up there in the winter, there's kinda a lot of work up there.
Yeah. Prefer us to wait until the weather breaks, if possible.
The other thing is, uh, we got a decent price, uh, prices, we are looking at actually awarding, um, plus LEDs behind clock face, which is kind of a neat thing, uh, they think it's, part of this is the, they're going to allow us to, they're gonna program us, 50 lighting programs, so we'll give them some of the basics and we'll give them some interesting ones, so right now, we have just white, incandescent light bulb behind the clock face, uh, this, you know, for the, uh, for the price you see here, replacing with the linear lights that you see that are color-changing like that, and so we can do kind of, you know, the clock face, we blew when the whole tower is white, and kind of give ourselves some more interesting options, and then, I really think it's gonna be a focal point, once we're done with it, because you can see the clock tower, you kind of ignore it sometimes, you know, you walk past it, and you just walk past it, and when you light it up, especially on the ground, took some of these, you know, where we were doing this, we had people on the ground, it really stands out, and you hit it with this kind of intense color, and, uh, I, I think it'll bring some, some pizzazz over this side, because, you know, a lot of it is on state, you know, we gotta start bringing some of it this way, some over union.
That's great. Questions?
Just one of the comments, I saw you on the Facebook there live with the, uh...
Oh, more lighting.
Yeah, can you just quick, move, talk about that, just give a little overview of what you guys are doing, the testing, all that?
So, so that is similar, that was a mock-up for the Amtrak Bridge to Erie Boulevard, so a side project that we're working on, um, is to light that bridge as kind of a modern art, similar to this, but different, um, we have a tentative agreement with Amtrak, I have a tentative agreement with DOT, and, uh, we're looking to do the work and have it installed, hopefully, in, for, uh, in combination with the opening of the rail station. So, it's one of those things where, uh, we've been talking about, you know, one of the governor's initiatives, lighting railroad bridges, it kind of makes these things, uh, cool, that bridge, it's kind of what we would talk about, embrace your light, so people look at that bridge and they think it's ugly, but really, when you light it in the right way, it's fantastic looking, it's really, well, an amazing bridge, they'll never make a bridge like that again, you know, it's, it's exquisitely wide, it was meant to carry four trains at one time, it's just huge, it has lattice on it, and if we do it right and we light it the right way, uh, it should make a really visual impact on, on the board. We're also hoping, uh, that it's going to what we call tie in the barbells, so, you know, we're calling the city, it's a barbell, and, uh, we have Mohawk Harbor on one end, you have the downtown on the other, and then you have Erie Boulevard, with that being in the middle, we're hoping that it'll kind of be that common beacon that you can kind of, you know, that, that you can use as a focal point in between. So, it's tentative, I mean, we still, uh, big steps having DOT and Amtrak onboard, but nothing is 100% signed and sealed yet, but they wanted to see final plans before they would sign off, and you cannot have final plans without the mock-up, so we're running things parallel right now, and hopefully, that's gonna mean that, that we get it done in time for October 1st, that's when the goal is for...
Train station.
The train station, and then, you know, the governor should be at the train station opening, so try to have everything great for it.
Well, thank you for all your work and your staff as well, it's excellent stuff.
And, uh, again, we got the lights under the bridge, that was also out there, so that's gonna be a huge thing, Erie, Front Street, all of those are gonna be lit, so the entire downtown core will be...
Very nice.
A lot more walkable.
Very good.
All right.
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is the review of the environmental significance of the city builder's project, it needs to develop, so please present.
It's just a reminder that the public hearing is coming up, and it needs to be done prior to the public hearing, it's just, uh, the reviews are just there as ticklers...
Okay.
In advance of the public hearing.
So, no action needed.
Okay. It's just, I just want, the date says Tuesday, public hearing, but...
Pardon?
Date says February 5th?
Oh, I did, no, and I did, and I made the mistake in public safety too, no, next week, 12.
I saw it too.
Okay. Um, the final review of Energize New York, the local law, and...
Rachel! Yes, um, we just have a few small changes to make to this, I believe, I don't know what Alex...
Yeah, there's just a couple minor formatting edits that need to be made, nothing of substance to the law itself, uh, if you look in the resolution, 2017 needs to be changed to 2018, and then the blanks obviously need to be filled in with, uh, City of Skynyrd, and then if you look at the local law, next page, the title says to establish, it needs to match the title of the resolution that said, which says, uh, to... Minor, minor edits, just wanna make you aware, before we pass the final version next week.
Okay. Yes.
And this is just for commercial buildings, right? This isn't residential buildings?
Correct.
Any other questions? Um, we have, uh, next up is a ceremonial motion, I'm sorry.
A second? All those in favor? Aye.
Yes, thank you, sorry. Uh, next up is the ceremony resolution for National Boy Scout Day, Mr. President.
Yes, I received a phone call from Mr. Thomas Waters, who's a, uh, one of our leaders at a local, uh, uh, Boy Scout troop at Woodlawn Elementary School, and, um, I'm actually going to speak to their troop Thursday evening, and I just realized that Monday is actually, or the month of February is National Boy Scouts, uh, Month, so we wanna do a resolution to honor this troop, and 25 men, uh, that are there, and young men, uh, and, uh, some moms that are actually troop leaders as well, which is really neat, so, uh, they've done some great work in the community, and just thought it'd be a nice way to have them come down, they're gonna pull up, of course, as well, and, uh, please, a bunch.
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I believe we need to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second, uh, is the property sale report in executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm doing it, yeah.
Can I please get a reason why we're going into an executive session?
No, we're not going into, we're recessing because of the sale of the, um, properties, that's, that's an executive session, so we're recessing planning and development, and so, and just moving on to the next, which is finance, yes.
Why, why is that an executive session?
Who was the store that done an executive session? Has some information to buy, and if there are pending litigation issues like that with the stuff that I'm adding, sometimes there's stuff that may all the clothes or, like, nothing.
Okay.
Did you get your motion?
Yes. Second. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please sit.
Call the orders, the finance committee, the item on the agenda is the CSA, CSEA contract approval, um, just a Ferrari, I guess, uh, basically, we'll go over the 2% raise.
Absolutely, thank you, as you know, the CSA contract ended December of 2016, uh, the administration, uh, worked, uh, lit CSA for the whole year of 2017 to finally, uh, finalize the contract, uh, CSA, uh, they settled with 2%, uh, 17, 18, and 19, uh, there's an increase in their longevity, uh, amounts, and, uh, of their board of directors. Uh, the contract goes through 2019, and, uh, we can probably come back to you, the, uh, copy of our retro payment for 2017, uh, if this gets approved.
Any questions? Seeing none, have a motion, someone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right, I'll call to order government operations, and this is a discussion for the time limit for public hearing comment, Mr. Riggi.
Yes, thank you. Speaker brought it to our attention last week about extending time limits for public hearings, seeing as we think the legislative agenda, I'm not so much on legislative agenda, but I think there's times for public hearings, especially, some of the pretty important work, I think it would be prudent for us to listen to whatever they have to say at public hearings, so, um, we went through this before, and I, I know, uh, years ago, we extended the privilege of the floor, it didn't last long, because a couple people got out of hand, jumped the privilege of the floor, but I would like to see this with the caveat that it's still at the discretion of the chair to limit it, so I would say between three and a maximum of five minutes, but if somebody's bringing across some good points, and I think that happened at the last meeting, um, because that lady couldn't make the presentation, because of the snow, I had to give her extra time, and I don't think five minutes is too long for public hearings, because they usually for, for important, uh, items, and that's why there's a public hearing, so, I would like to see us at least as a pilot, to maybe move that to five minutes, a maximum of five minutes, at the discretion of the chair, if there's a lot of redundancy and people are saying the same thing, then, uh, you know, that'd be up to the chair after three minutes, so, I'd like to see us try that as a pilot and see how it goes.
Comments?
So, the only challenge I have with that is, if we have a, um, robust meeting, and we're allowing people to go on for five minutes in a 10-minute timeframe, instead of us getting through three people, we're only gonna get through two people, so, there could be a certain amount of discouraged individuals that may want, now, want to stay, and, or, I just would want us to be conscious of that, where, you know, people's time, fact that everyone wants to be able to speak, and, you know, if you have two people in a five-minute and a 10-minute timeframe, uh, meeting, uh, there could be people getting discouraged and not want to hang around and actually speak, so...
See, it's not just me that I'm commiserate.
I understand what you're saying, and sometimes people sleep now at three minutes, um, at the three-minute mark, because they're like, oh, this is too long, but, um, with the public hearing, generally speaking, we don't see, unless it's like CBG, we don't see a huge number of people coming out to speak, so, um, I mean, if we can't get to five, maybe we can just drop in the middle and be at four, but the one thing that I would say, though, I don't think that, um, that we should be, the chair should be able to say that you said the same thing as the last person, so therefore, we're gonna stop you here, because people would, you know, they take issue with that, and certainly, I can't blame them, so I don't know that, um, had the chair at the discretion of saying, well, that's what, you know, the guy before you said, so, stop right there, so, I think it's a good idea to extend the timeframe, but we extend it, we extend it with whoever, however long the extension is, people can speak to that point, up into that timeframe, so I agree with that.
Mr. Powell? I think we have to consider a technical issue, uh, with the technology, we have a timer that probably won't allow for a four-minute piece in one area and a three-minute piece in another.
You can set that.
Can you?
Yes.
Okay, good, I wasn't, because sometimes that thing doesn't work very well.
That's true. You spoke out to that, but you are fast enough, you can, you can.
So, I, I just thought maybe from a technical perspective, it might cause up issues, so, but apparently not.
Yeah, that works.
Move to there.
I mean, uh, I don't have a problem, I mean, uh, up in a minute or two, you know, I mean, public hearing, so, I mean, a lot of people do attend these, I think, so, I'm in favor of adding a few.
Um, I have no problem trying it, you know, I mean, I don't think we have to change it forever, right? If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. I do agree that sometimes the, I mean, I, I, I understand respecting everybody's time, but we're also, our main job is to listen to the public, right? So, and we want people to be able to make their, and public hearings generally are around very important pieces of legislation, so, um, you know, I think to try it and see what we think, I, I anticipate people not using the whole time, because they're more accustomed to the three minutes, when they need it, I, I don't think it's warranted for the legislative agenda, privilege of the floor, but for public hearings.
And I agree with you as well, I'd like to, you know, do it on a trial basis, but I think the most important thing is making sure the speakers are on the top, uh, whatever the public hearing is designated for, when they're speaking, and that would be the job of the chair, and that'd be correct, to making sure that that is what they are talking about, not something off the issue of the public hearing, and I have no problem, uh, doing that, again, I think it's important, I mean, really, the CBG and really our budgets are the only two times that I can really, probably, we'd have a lot of folks, you know, try to speak.
Casino.
Well, that's true, they have my golf ladder too, man, that's, I'll never forget that one, we're over three hours, that's, that was a long one, uh, but, you know, some to that extent, and again, to try it on a trial basis, uh, I think it'd be fine, again, with the chair, whether he or she may be, be on myself, uh, to making sure that they, that speakers stay on the top, is what we're, is called for.
Mr. Powell, any, do you have another comment?
Just a suggestion that, given Ms. Porterfield's comments, uh, and Mr. Riggi's comments, try it on a trial basis for four minutes, um, people can contact us by phone, or email, or letter, they do all the time anyway, so, uh, that might be a, a nice compromise to move forward and see how it goes.
Legally, I don't know that, I mean, do...
Do we need to vote?
Do we need to vote on it, or is it...
That's a good question.
Well, if we're doing a pilot, we should set a time limit and make some sort of resolution, like, not a...
I would agree.
Through six months, six months trial?
Hmm, three months.
How about a month?
Well, the general... Frank Brusio finally had a...
Okay, so, a month?
Yeah, we can always extend it, I mean, why not, why get into...
Amongst all the...
To meetings.
To meetings.
Well, we might not even have a public hearing.
All right, excellent. Public hearings, right?
Yeah.
Two or three months.
Four, public hearings, maybe try four public hearings.
I said, let's do it to include the CBG piece. What is CBG?
Well, we can always extend it if it works well, right? So...
How about two months for, for public hearings?
Right.
Whichever comes first.
Right.
With Mr. Pogge's point about CBG, um, I think we should try to get that included, because that is a good, that's a good deram, that's when, one of those times when a lot of people come out, so, whatever that timeframe is.
I think it's May, isn't it?
When is the public hearing?
It's May.
Oh, there we go.
So, if we could at least take it May.
That's something, right, to include the CBG, whatever you guys want.
I think it's a good opportunity again, just to hear residents...
I don't really personally don't think, except for when there's a lot of speakers, it's gonna be a big issue, many times when we have one or two speakers for...
And that's a weird check and I'm looking, I mean, very rarely do we have more than one or two, exactly.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion to increase the time limit on public hearing, uh, commentary to four minutes, until we get through the CBG public hearing. Do you have a motion, moved by Mr. Riggi, second amendment to Porterfield, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before government operations this evening?
Yes, Ms. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
On, on the topic of, of, uh, conversation, I just wanna remind everybody, we're gonna be doing our coffee with the council, uh, that begins this, uh, Sunday over at Proctor's, so we're gonna have, uh, every second Sunday of the month, we're gonna be having, uh, coffee with the council at the Skynyrd Green Market, uh, it's gonna be from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., um, we are gonna be set up near the Proctor's box office, uh, in between the rest area, area, and the Proctor's box office, the years that will be in that, uh, general vicinity, but it's gonna be, uh, consistent, we're gonna do it every second Sunday of the month, um, and please, uh, the council members, just let me know who's gonna be able to attend, uh, you don't have to stay for the entire three hours, or half hour, for events, please do that, um, we are gonna target with one of the local coffee vendors at the Green Market, uh, to offer a little coupon or ticket that, uh, Erica's gonna make for us from the Green Market, uh, again, have a cup of coffee on us, and just come and talk with us, uh, let us hear your concerns, what are you looking for, talk about the programs we have to offer, uh, whatever initiatives that we're looking at, and again, uh, just an open and transparency, uh, that we can present to our constituents, uh, and again, the Green Market is well-known for having some great tournaments there, they do an excellent job on those processes there, quite often as a cashier, and working there, uh, as a volunteer, uh, and then we're gonna continue it throughout the whole year, though, even when they move to the outside here, um, outside here at City Hall, I think it's important, we got the table, we got some chairs, we do a banner as well, that says Kentucky City Council on it, uh, and again, we're gonna look for some brochures, we're gonna have a little stand with all kinds of information that, uh, folks can grab from us, uh, again, just think it's a good way for us to meet our constituents, um, and again, a lot of folks who don't either reside in the city, also, uh, frequent the, the market, but I think it's just a good way for us to be there and have a presence, I talked with the mayor as well, there's gonna be times where we invite, uh, different department heads, code enforcement, you know, police fire, the mayor himself, uh, and we're gonna do press releases on a regular basis the week prior to, uh, to put in the community notes to let folks know, uh, that we're gonna be there between those hours, and who, the mayor might be there between noon and 1:00. But I just think it's a good way of getting out there, again, Ms. Rowland, we talked about last year, and unfortunately, we just never got together, I never got together, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to be out there, uh, in the public and talk with folks.
Okay, so, do you have to come before government operations?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Aye.
Call to order public safety, uh, first item is a taxi ordinance, uh, for us.
Yes, so we met with, uh, Lauren Bailey from CDTA to discuss, um, some of the concerns of the, uh, taxi company owners, um, their main concern, one of their main concerns were, was the, the limit of seven years on the cars, um, and she was very open to going back to the other municipalities to talk to them about increasing that to 10 years, so that is in the works, um, another concern was the rates, and, um, she's also willing to carry their voice back to the other municipalities on make, possibly making some amendments to the rates, uh, to align with what was in place prior to, um, so that's in the works, um, I think the important thing to know about this legislation is, first, we passed the legislation, but all the nuts and bolts come through in an MOU that we have to agree to later on down the line, so as we pass this legislation, and her recommendation is that we wait until the adjustments are made, and we make, you know, accept the legislation after everybody else has agreed to changes, um, we will still be talking about what it's gonna cost the city, uh, how the nuts and bolts of it are going to work, uh, who's gonna be responsible for what, those types of things, so, uh, before they can come to agreement on those things, they need to get the legislation actually through, so I thought that was a very important point. I think it's also important to note that it has changed drastically since our initial conversations with CDTA, um, CDTA will not be doing any of the inspection of the cabs, CDTA will not be doing any driver training, customer, customer service-wise, uh, it's really strictly an administrative role, uh, where they'll be doing the licensing and, uh, the permitting and things of that nature, uh, and also, they will be a centralized location for complaints, um, so that all the cabs will have, you know, the, the complaints in the cab, um, still, part of that MOU is also the universal medallion, they haven't worked out the details on the universal medallion, so, even though we, even if we choose to pass this legislation, we will still have input on the universal medallion, and we don't have to necessarily agree to the MOU, it, it gives us another opportunity to weigh in on where they're, what direction they're going with it, and I think that's really important, because that was another concern of our taxi drivers, uh, was not being able to, once, if we accept the universal medallion, we then cannot cap the number of cabs that we have in the city or anything else, CDTA will drive that fully, uh, so, there's still things to discuss, still things for us to consider, uh, but right now, we're waiting on CDTA to come back to us with regard to the changes, um, so, I, I believe it, we'll, we'll just table this until... So I, I believe it will, we'll just table this until, um, that occurs. Uh, the other, the other conversation, part of the conversation was around timing. And, you know, because our year runs differently than their year, our year runs March to April, their year runs December to December. So she said once the legislation is passed, she would recommend people taking their insurances out only through December, because then they'll have to renew within the CDTA requirements. So it's really good conversation, um, and, you know, they're very open to our concerns. They certainly recognize the fact that a significant number of taxi cab owners stepped up to voice their concerns. And we'll, I guess, stay tuned.
Yeah, and again, to piggyback off of that, um, CDTA was very, uh, pleased that we reached out to speak with them as well. I think that's, uh, important, that they're willing to sit down, still have a dialogue, uh, with us. The Towne Colony, for instance, doesn't have any legislation, uh, regarding taxi cab owners. I was completely surprised, uh, with the number of hotels and shopping centers and everything else that they have. There is, there is no regulation in the Towne Colony at all. Nothing.
Nothing.
So, uh, it's going to take some time for the Towne Colony to come out, because there's obviously going to be some, some funding, that's going to be required of them. But again, well over, what, three quarters of legislation comes from the City of Schenectady, I believe, wasn't that what she said? I mean, the majority of this came from us.
I think one of the speakers mentioned that, that we're...
Yeah, so we're certainly the leader in this, and I, and I, yeah, we are very proud of that, the fact that, uh, CDTA is, is looking to use us as the model. But again, uh, you know, meeting with the taxi cab owners, I think was, was the right thing to do, uh, you know, sitting down with them, because again, they're all small business, and we want the small business to stay here in Schenectady, to hear their legitimate concerns, and, uh, I think that's what we're doing by meeting with them. So I thank, you know, Lisa and again, CDTA for meeting with us and keep the dialogue open, um, and we continue to look forward.
So we're going to hold this for...
Definitely at this point.
Till we hear from...
Until we hear from CDTA.
Okay.
I just got a question, because I think maybe Mr. Gibbs brought it up, about the elephant room, which is true. We have Uber and Lyft, which are providing the same service, but they, there's no control over them. I mean, I don't think we can do anything about that, but it is a pretty good point that's made. They can operate without any controls at all, and these other companies that are...
They're all regulated.
Have, have our control. So I just, maybe at some point that'll change, I don't know.
Okay, item number two, um, discussion, this is law. Mr. Falteko, uh, this...
I think we're going to bring this back on the, on two weeks, yeah, just because I haven't had a chance to talk with him about it, and I know he received this letter, but I don't have the background on it.
All right, so we'll hold this, I'll bring it back in two weeks. And the next item is a view employee background check, and this is Fal, 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 Fal.
So there's our first essay, two public hearings, yeah.
It's a pilot, yeah. All right. We have a motion to, uh...
I'll move it.
Second, all the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Call to order claims. And there were so many...
Hold on.
But, uh...
He didn't ask for anything else, maybe?
Oh.
Anything else come before voting, I think?
You have something?
I resent that call for...
Rewind the tape.
So this is with regard to the mudslide that, uh, that happened. There's, um, there's actually a fundraiser that's being specifically for the group of people that were affected by that. The Community Crisis Network is going to be doing that, um, which is through, run through SCAP, but it's a group of people that are part of the Community Crisis Network. And, uh, SICAM is actually going to be doing the major announcement tomorrow at their SICAM assembly, and then, so, um, I should get an email or a flyer or something that I'll share with all of you. But, so the fundraiser is going to be specifically for that people, it's going to be, you know, managed, and they'll find out what their needs are, and then help them through that process. As I understand it, some people have already contacted the city, because whatever help they were getting, was just a small amount of help for a few days, and now they're asking where, you know, what assistance, might going to get beyond that. So there is a fundraiser that's underway. I should say that this, um, actually was a suggestion that was that one-two-three-oh-nine neighborhood association made last week, and that's where the suggestion came out of, so, um, they've started to move ahead on that. So I think it's, it's great that the community is supporting people who are, you know, in this particular crisis.
Did you mention a date?
The, it's a fundraiser.
Okay, when?
This, well, tomorrow, they will, they will announce what, uh, you know, where you can give and how you can give and all of that. So I'll, I'll forward the information to you as I get it.
I got you, good.
So let me just be clear though, I don't think it's going to be a fundraising event. It's going to be more like a fundraiser, so you can donate money to...
Online, piles, something, okay.
Right.
GoFundMe page, yeah, piles, yeah, okay.
Something, yeah.
All right.
Motion for this thing?
We have a second. All the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, call to order claims.
There you go, Mr. Riggi, you got it now.
Discuss if we'll take the claims first and then we'll...
Executive session, yes, this.
Motion to go into executive session. Porterfield, second.
Never been on plan. Yes.
You guys got a stadium.